It's now 9:33 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of September 10th, 2019 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing none, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda and order of priority? Dr. Pritchett with a support from Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This time is Marilyn Schneider will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning, I'm Marilyn Schneider, I'm the State Board Executive and you've just been listening to the State Superintendent who's also Chairperson of the Board, Dr. Michael Rice. As we go around the table to the left, the Board's President is Dr. Cassandra Albridge and she resides in Rochester Hills still. Technically I'm Dearborn now. She's from Dearborn. And next to her would be the seat for Dr. Pamela Pugh, she resides in Saginaw, she is unable to join us today. Next to her, Michelle Fecto. Ms. Fecto comes to us from Detroit, she's the Board Secretary. Nikki Snyder is from Dexter and she is a member of the Board. The Board's NANSP delegate, it's their associate, Association, National Association of State Boards of Education is Ms. Tiffany Kelly. This year's Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Carol Laheed. And Mrs. Laheed comes to us from Rochester Community Schools. She's an English Language Arts and History teacher in Stony Creek Elementary School. I mean, High School, Stony Creek High School? Good, thanks. And across the table, Josh Nahart, he's representing the Governor's Office. Next to him, Dr. Judy Pritchett and she's a Board Member from Washington Township. Lupe Ramos Montini, Ms. Ramos Montini is a Board Member from Grand Rapids and she's on the phone. Ms. Montini, right?
Yes, I'm on the phone.
Hey, thanks for joining us by phone. And next to me is Mr. Tom McMillan, he's from Oakland Township and he's the Board's Treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Dr. Koenig Schneck will begin the new employee introductions.
Good morning, all, I have three new employees that I would like to introduce and I'll start first with Jose Velasquez Elliott, who's with us from the Office of Great Start. I had a chance to meet with Jose, he's a fellow chip, which is always a good thing. Jose, you want to tell us a little more about yourself? Also joined by Candace Vincent, Candace, I had a chance to visit with her as well, a couple of weeks ago, she's joining us and working in the Office of Grand Technical Education.
I am from Shawnee Township, I have 17 years, 13 professional years. I'm a tech teacher for the state team, and now I'm in the Education Department of Washington as an education consultant.
And also I have Selena Mills in the Office of Grand Technical Education. In fact about Selena, Selena and I spent a number of years together at Mount Com ISD, worked together with Grand Technical Education.
Thank you, yes, so I'm back with Dr. Kay and with Dr. Kyle, who was a fellow student. I spent 19 years at Mount Com, I started as a cosmetology teacher, so I was immediately authorized and they took me right out of the industry. Honestly, I was probably doing a personal applied, but I hope they gave me a job. So I went from being a cosmetology instructor to a curriculum specialist and then moved into a principal and associate secretary. Thank you, I'm excited to be here.
Kyle Durant with introduction.
Thank you, we have a new addition in our office, and this is Scott Addison. Thanks for meeting with him last week and he was trying to recruit me to his basketball team. He might say yes or no today, by the way. As you said, I work for the Office of Financial Management. He's not going to be working with me. I had to come in here, I was a little confused. Four weeks, so I'm still...
Thank you, thank you very much, welcome to all. Dr. Kiesler, more introductions?
Thank you. So we are very pleased to have three new employees in the Division of Educators, Student School Sports. The first is Michelle Watkins from our Office of Educational Sports. Michelle?
Hi, I'm Michelle Watkins, I come here from Boston area. And right now I'm just in a baseball.
Also have from our Office of Educational Sports, Jones.
Good morning, I'm Joan, I am, I was formerly from Jacob. Graduated, went to Nevada, worked in education. Taught everything from kindergarten to... Literacy specialist. And most recently worked with... Excited to be here.
Last but not least, we have other multiple educators.
An analyst, provides certification support. I was a student assistant here two years ago in the same office, then after moving
Welcome to all the new MDE staff members, we appreciate all the experience you bring to the department. Did we miss any new employees in the room? Once, twice, and thrice, and gone, thank you again and welcome. If you plan to offer public comment today, please complete a form and share that with Marilyn. Forms are available on the table just outside the boardroom and they must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. That public comment will begin approximately 1:00 PM. Please be here at that time, make sure that you have an opportunity to comment. First item on the committee, the whole agenda is presentation on the Fresh and Furious Food Truck Program. This is truly food for thought early in the day for us Board. Today, we're pleased to host students from Ingham Intermediate School District's Culinary Arts Program and their extraordinary instructor, Chef Corbett Day. They will share information on the Fresh and Furious Food Truck, which is onsite and preparing to serve lunch. We're also pleased to welcome Superintendent Jason Melama and the Ingham Intermediate School District Cabinet who are in attendance. Dr. Scott Koenig Schneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-1220, System and Student Transitions in the Michigan Department of Education, has worked with Chef Day, although there is some question about whether he has worked with Chef Day in the kitchen. And he will do the introductions.
Great, thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you for the Board, to the Board for allowing us some time to highlight some of our students today. At one of Dr. Rice's first cabinet meetings, he was talking about the importance of student voice and involving students and hearing from students. And talked about bringing students to the board meeting. It was around noon, I was a little hungry, and thought about Chef Day and the food truck. I was fortunate enough to spend three years at Ingham ISD and work with chefs and the rest of the cabinet and became very aware of the culinary program that is at the Wilson Talent Center. There are 18 programs there, all of them are fantastic, and this is one as well. It's nationally renowned, the students and they'll probably tell you, travel around the country and compete showing their skills regarding culinary arts and hospitality. I'm not going to say anymore, I'm going to show this first video clip and then I will turn it over to Chef Day.
I came here first just to get food, honestly, free food, so I really wanted to be in the cosmetology program, but as I learned more about the program and that, I was just not cooking with food and just doing things like that every day and there's a bunch of different experiences, just to be open-minded when you come and that it actually is a really good program. It's fast-paced and it's hard and it's a lot of work, but it's worth it because it's really fun. My favorite aspects about the program is that we have people come in and they talk to us about their college and what they do in their jobs and they make us food in that process and then we have our competitions like FCC LA and Skills. It's a great bonding tool used to like make friends, competitions, it's just a great experience and everyone should go.
Food truck is a lot of fun, it's very fast-paced, especially when you get lots of customers. Really, it just has to be a smooth system and you gotta get done fast.
We have three instructors, Chef Day, he's the main one, he's the overseer, the other is Megan and the other is Bailey, and they're really understanding and they're helpful and it's nice to have three of them. When I come back next year, I'll be here all day and I will be the culinary manager of the kitchen, so basically kind of the executive chef of the kitchen, I'll just tell students like the day-to-day, what to do, what's supposed to be done. I will be the catering manager also, so I'll kind of be the overseer of that and see the events and kind of organize that and dates and stuff and things like that.
With that, I'm going to introduce Chef Day.
Awesome, thank you very much for having us out today, we're ecstatic to be here. I believe Dr. Rice said he wanted to come on the truck and help serve lunch today, so please come out. He talked about shifting jobs, maybe we'll get him on the truck since Dr. Kay wouldn't do that. But we're really excited to be here, like Dr. Kay said, we had the opportunity to work on this project, I believe it was three years ago, and it was a student-led project. A student came to me and said, "Look, I'd really like to start a business, I don't want to open a restaurant because I know what the cost is." And I said, "Well, what do you think about?" She goes, "Well, I'm thinking about a food truck." At that time, food trucks were hopping, I mean, it was the head of the market. So I said, "Write a proposal, let's put together a business plan and let's present it to the Board, let's see what they say." Three days later, she had a business plan done, so I knew she was the real deal, she knew what she wanted to do. So we actually took it to our principal at the time, Jeanne Farina. Jeanne said, "Okay, I think we should take it to the Board, see what the Board has to say." So the presentation went to the Board, the Board came right back to us, said, "That's a great education opportunity, let's do it." Like, "Okay, this is awesome." I think within nine months, we had the truck ordered, it was built out in New Jersey for us, custom-built, wrapped, and they drove it into town and I can remember all the cameras sitting outside videotaping as this truck's driving down the road, just the excitement that there was. So a little bit about our program, we're a two-year program, we just this year hired a catering manager full-time because of the services that we're offering. We do several certifications, so students in our class can earn about 45 college credits if they stay with me for two years at no cost to them, which really is helping the educational piece. So we're seeing students not only continue their post-secondary education, but they're jumping right into industry. You talk about the relationships that we're building in the classroom right now, I actually started back at Lenawee County seven years ago, well, more than that, 14 years ago, this is my seventh year at Ingham. And one of the poles for me to come to Ingham County was the contacts that you guys have up here, it's a phenomenal place to grow contacts. So the relationships that we've built, industry is coming to us so fast, I can't produce kids fast enough. And that's a good problem to have. And these aren't dishwashers going out. We just had a graduate that just left, he started at Michigan State, he's in the process of becoming a certified sous chef. So he's doing a two-year apprenticeship up there with them right now, they're starting him at $17 an hour and he's doing a online program through Detroit, he's doing gastronomy to earn that certification, he's hoping to be an ACF certified chef, two years, he's starting at $50,000 once he gets out. So these are real deal jobs, our kids are not going out, like I said, dishwashers, McDonald's, these are high-end facilities looking for students. And the scholarship opportunities, the students are going to touch a little bit about that. I would bargain to say in the last seven years, there's been about a half a million dollars in scholarships coming out of these students. And I'm going to let them share a little bit about that, so I'm going to start out with Connor Long, he's our food truck manager this year, so just talk a little bit about the food truck operations.
Well, I'm Connor Long, I am a second year here at the Wilson Talent Center. I first started last year as a half-day and I've always loved the culinary experience and the hands-on, so they brought me back as a food truck manager to do more of the Here at the Wilson Talent Center, you learn more than what just goes on here in the kitchen, learn more like what happens on the truck, the order, inventory, what product needs to offer that day, the workers and times that we need to be there to make sure it's successful and make sure our customers are happy with what they got. Again, this Fresh and Furious Truck is all ran by our students, so whatever happens in the end, it's all relying on our students. So when you guys come up to the window, it's always the students taking the orders and whatever you order is the students that are cooking. Oh, as I'm getting more in the business side, I'm going to pass this on to you and the more information on the catering side.
Oh, I am Caitlin Fowler and I'm a second-year student, I am a full day, so they brought me back to the baking manager. And I started this program wanting to learn more about baking and like Zenaya said in the video, I wanted to be cosmetology. And when I started the class, I actually really liked it because I go to a really small school and so we know everybody and going into this class, I got to meet a lot more people and we're all interested in the same things. And so I got to make a lot of friends through that. And so we have a square store for the baking and pastries that will open in mid-November, or mid-October and then that will be for our Thanksgiving and fall themed pastries and that will close on November 15th. And then we will open back up and drop our Christmas and holiday menu on November 16th and then close that mid-December. And it will be all students making the pastries for everybody and making sure that all the products are done for that. And we'll be making things like, you'll launch decorated cookies, pies and anything like that. And like Chef Day said, we hired on a full-time catering manager to help us keep up with all the things that we were doing. Last year, we had around 250-plus events and this year, we are on track to way above and beyond that. One of our big events that we do is a military dinner and so a lot of the people that come to the military dinner, it's their first time being home for Christmas, it's their first time meeting their kids possibly, first time seeing their family and things like that. And we serve food to hundreds of military personnel that come. We have a, we get a lot of hands-on experience, we work a lot with BEOs, which are our banquet event orders, to make sure that everything is done and prepared for the event that we will have. We prep all of the food for the food truck or any catering event that we have and all of the managers that we have this year, they focus on making sure that everybody gets, has a job to do for any of our catering events, make sure that all the food gets done so that Chef Bailey and Chef Day can help and teach the first-year students that we have. And then all of our students will assist with the catering operations, there's some where we have to have Michael take the phone calls and help us with more of that or show us how to talk to somebody on a phone call or email them to let us know what they want from us. And one of the big things that we do are CTSOs, which is our competitions. It's on Instagram, to talk to you guys about that.
Come on, guys, Bradley and the second student. Also have this. But I chose culinary arts in hospitality because my educator, he was a former back there. Before he retired, he did a lot of like weddings and parties. Like, I was, it was really awesome to see the pictures and the shit. Coming, I thought I was going to, I was starting to see. So this past year, all the culinary arts are part of their presentations. Skill USA assists the organization, all CTSO. A lot of opportunities in these organizations. Pictures from Anaheim, California or Disney World. Where we can take...
First, just Kate, the skills that dedication and the education. Also a competitor for us. So personally, I do back-in-house competition, taking on such roles as well as preparing food and delivering. Like this past July, my heart and feeling, I'm a huge fan of California, especially in designing hours of a class in restaurant and distribution. Not that we play sleight hand in our division, you know, hundreds of people. So with that means that there are different levels, like I said, regional state and national competition, it's not a linear difficulty, but more experiential where judges focus on both just the quality of food and then coming to action where it focuses on sanitation and communication to the teams. While going into those competitions, you really never know the value of variability. So you know, I know that failure or missing a recognition or having a missing career, but overall, it's just a lot of fun, a lot of money to be made, honestly, with one of the scholarships that you need to spend. So schools like Sullivan University, Baker College, Johnson Wales. Personally, I have over $16,000 from Johnson, Sullivan University, also $1,000 at Baker College just for competition. I'm going to pass it back to Chef Day for my contribution.
So students with a passion to learn, I think one of the cool things about being in a CTE program is we get those students to have a passion to learn. They may think they want to do something else and they may get stuck in our program, but we're glad to have them. It's not that we're converting them, but we're showing them opportunities that they have. And I can't speak enough for these guys, I mean, we've really upgraded our chef apprentices this year, they are running operations. We as teachers have really been able to step back, jump back in the classroom where we need to be, instructing the first-year students. We have staff meetings with our chef apprentices first thing in the morning with our instructor staff. And like I said, I can hand off BEOs and all the orders for a week and they're taking care of business and I don't have to worry about it. So these guys are getting real-life experience and I really believe that's why industry opportunities are becoming available for our students. Creating opportunities is not, it's not a hard task for us, they're there. Industry professionals are coming. Phone calls are happy for these students, we're pretty excited about that. And the real-world experience, you guys are going to get to experience the real-world experience that these guys experience. Like Connor and Caitlin both said, they run operations. I'm strictly here to drive the truck, our catering manager's there to drive the truck, get into the location, and they do all the work. We just, and I was just talking to Dr. Rice prior to this, we just were asked to participate in a large event up at Soaring Eagle Casino on the 28th. So when Dr. Kay was talking about the national recognition, as far as we knew, when we had the food truck, we were the first food truck student run in the state of Michigan, we haven't verified that it's in the United States, but we're pretty sure we're the first one in the United States as well. And that's something we really hang our hats on. The success that these students have, I think will blow your mind when you guys have a lunch up today. Again, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here, Dr. Rice, Dr. Kay, thank you for having us, Board, we appreciate the opportunity. We truly appreciate everything you guys do for us on the educational side. I don't think people understand the hard job you guys have, but we appreciate the opportunity to be in the classroom. Questions we can answer for you? I tried to stay under my time, a couple of the...
You did a, you did a great job.
First of all, thank you for coming out today and I'm looking forward to lunch this afternoon. You mentioned they get college credits.
Right.
Through which college?
So through the ProStar program, there's over 300 colleges and universities that we have partnerships with. So ProStar is through the National Restaurant Association, it's a two-year program, it's nationwide and every college varies. In the state of Michigan, we partner with Fair State University, Baker College, Culinary Student Michigan, out-of-state Sullivan University, and Sam's actually headed to University of Central Florida. So the good part about the colleges is we can contact the colleges, show them the layout of the program that we have, the certifications that they have. A lot of times, we can earn the kids 9 to 15 credits just sitting down with an advisor if we don't have those relationships that we do.
Other questions?
Yes, Dr. Kay.
I figured Chef would be very humble and the students would be very humble. Can you talk about more about your catering? These students, it's more than just coming to school from 8:00 to 3:00 or 8:00 to 10:00. It's 6:00 in the morning, you mentioned the 28th, I know that's a Saturday. Can you talk about the after-hours commitment that you guys have?
Connor, he actually comes to school like super early, he comes at 5:30, 6 o'clock and then quite a few of us actually stay after school until 4, 5, 6 o'clock trying to get everything done for our catering events. And then a lot of our events that we have, we have to come to school on the weekends, 6, 7 o'clock in the morning again and then we're out until 8, 9 o'clock at night. And Connor can actually talk about our food truck stuff too.
Oh, so yeah, I mean, the casino, it's not going to take an 8 to 3 process to get everything processed. I can tell you that, so I mean, I got to make sure I'm there early enough to get everything on a cart, ready to go. Matter of time, just so we can get there in time. And that doesn't just add up just to be right.
I think, I think one of the things that, that people don't understand, people always ask me, "How in the world do you get students to get there at 5:00 in the morning?" It's because they have a passion for what they're doing. They take pride in what they're doing on a day-to-day basis. And she's not kidding, when she says 250 events, that was last year, our calendar for September, October, November is packed already. We're talking two or three events a day. So these students, they're on the phone with their clients, they're meeting with our catering managers, they're writing invoices, they're setting the BEOs, they're learning the business side of it, they're learning the partnership, they're learning the relationship with these clients. I think the other thing that people don't understand is they all work full-time, if not one job, two. So not only are they with me full-day at school, but they're adjusting, they're, I know Caitlin's at a new restaurant that's opening up in Jackson, so she's learning the processes. Connor's over at MSU and at the University Club. You are currently at MSU. And then you got to take into consideration, these kids are high school kids, they have school events too. We have lots of athletes that are doing it and they're adjusting their schedule to get real, real-life experience to take them on post-secondary. So I know for any of the CTSOs we do, students are required to put $40 extra outside of school to get in. Military dinner, I know we spend probably $12 to $13 doing that.
It was $14 for the...
$14 on Saturday. Every Thanksgiving, we prepare the meals for all the students at the Career Center. So that's a three-day process for us, I think we put $36, $56 last year. And staff feeds our students Thanksgiving before we all take off. So again, it's a passion thing for these guys. 5:00, 4:00 in the morning, you've been there, we've been there till 11:30, 12:00 at night, we back up the next morning, do it again. So it's an easy sell for me for industry, say, "Look, these guys are working 16, 17-hour days, they get it." You're not going to have a problem putting them in a management position or a sous chef position, they're going to want operations for you, they're going to be shocked if you see... One of the things, I know Scott, Dr. Kay, I know Jason as well, have brought people daily coming in to see what these students are doing. And our kitchen's always open, you guys are all welcome to come, we're very proud of what we do. I don't do it for me, I do it for these guys. I live in Adrian still, I still drive an hour to work every day, so when they're there at 4:00 in the morning, I'm leaving at 2:30, it's good to be there at 4:00 so they can be in the door, because they're sitting on the door, bang, and wait. I'm coming, guys, coming, but that just shows the excitement that they have.
That's terrific, Ms. Fecto.
It is wonderful, it sounds amazing and I wish there was something like that in other places across the state too. So I'm just wondering, do the students get paid or what happens to the money that's generated?
So all the funds that we utilize for the food truck go back into our budget and then when we take the trips to Anaheim, California for CTSOs, we use those to pay the student dues. And that's another reason we use hours, we really want to track, if you really want to put dollars in for competition, you're going to put the hours in outside. But then this is real-life experience.
It subsidizes their trips and things like that.
And then, like Caitlin said, military, they're not something we donate, so we donate all the time and on a Saturday morning, they have 25 students show up and be there for 10, 11 hours to feed our military. Really see how it hits the students when you see this. So we are always excited, we just got the call asking, "Hey, you going to come out to the military dinner again?" We're out in the hanger, they're bringing the helicopters in, poor kids are running around getting presents, if they're bad, did they see it for the first time, mom didn't see it for the first time, so you know, we're not only teaching them industry, we're teaching them how to give back, that's a huge part of what we do in hospitality, industry is to give back. To make sure we give as back as much as we can as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. McMillan.
So do the students have to take all the standardized tests and everything, everybody else does M-Step and all the, they just have to take those and the SAT and everything? And then, so...
Can we take this, send this back to...
I was going to say that, so you're, say that again, you're having, you're getting math and English?
Yes.
Okay, so your whole day is not just business operations and...
So I, with being a full-day student for me personally, I have to have an English credit to make up for my separate English credit back at my homeschool. So I come in at 7:00 in the morning to take my English class through Fair State and then right after that, I go to class and then sometimes we'll leave in the middle of class to go to math and then we come back and start working again.
Other questions by Board members? Ms. Laheed, questions?
Very impressed, I can't wait to meet you.
You're going to have to wait a little bit. It's lunch, it's not breakfast. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. A little bit more about the program itself, so you end up graduating from your home high school then and you still attend the events, prom, homecoming, all of that. But when you say you're full-time, full-day at the Career Center, you don't attend your high school during... But, when you say you're full-time, full-day at the Career Center, you don't attend your high school during that day unless you've done an extra curricular activity going on. Okay, all right, I just wanted to get that clear in my head.
I think one of the misconceptions of, of CTE is that when they come to visit us, at eighth and tenth grade visits, we really try to lay out what the program and studies should look like at the high school if they really wanna be with us their junior year. Wanna make sure they have all their credits up to that point, if they plan on staying with us as a full-day student, we really wanna talk to them their sophomore year. We'll sit down with parents and counselors and say, here's the layout of plan if they wanna be here. I know some are doing econ classes, some are doing math classes through Ferris State, English on campus, so we try to offer as many of those educational opportunities on campus. So, if they have to scale from my class for an hour, I'll have them scale for an hour because I know I'm having the rest of the time. But not only do they earn the high school credits, as she says, she's taking the Ferris class, so she's earning her first year. Do try to let them be high school kids.
Any other questions for board members? Dr. Kaden, yep, please.
You talked about your programs with disabilities in your culinary...
I'm sorry if you said that.
You talked about your programs with students who may have disabilities in your culinary program.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, and I, and I, when you ask that, I go back to, to your first year then? Three years ago, we did, uh, the Pro-Start competition, we actually utilized, uh, part of our sale program kids to come down to our classroom.
Sale program and...
We have an acronym on that one.
Mr. Rainbow?
Those adults with independent learning. So, we actually had two students come down. One was autistic and then one was, her was agitated and impaired. Um, and then we also had a student who had physical disabilities, was, was in a wheelchair. She had a very, uh... How to properly say that? She had, uh, issues with muscles, so they, they spasmed. So, she had, she couldn't move her hands, which in the culinary, you're saying, how in the world do they make this happen? So, we actually worked with the University of Michigan, Michigan State University professors to help develop a cutting tool that she could utilize for competition. So, not only that year did we take a full team that is prepped and did a year prior, so it came back in second years of the period, we also took this team. We actually had one of our second-year students who came back and said, hey, I wanna manage this team, I'm gonna captain this team. God bless her, and Andrew came down multiple times to help us out. And when we were trying to figure out as a seventeen-year high school student, how to deal with those disabilities individually, and see how she managed that team, we spent one-on-one time with each one of those students every day to figure out how to deal with that, that type of disability. I'm gonna tear up because it always hits me. Our first, first team that came back for second year finished third in the state that year. Our team with the disabilities came in fourth, they were half a point behind our third-place team. It was unbelievable, and if you're sitting there looking at a clock that says sixty minutes as it's ticking down, as a coach, she couldn't touch anything. She had to let the kids do work. You're just sitting there burying, 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 and it wasn't like we made a simple menu, it was tough. If anybody knows anything about Pro-Start, you have sixty minutes, you have two eight-foot tables or two beauty bars, no electricity, nothing battery-operated you're allowed to use. You have to produce two appetizers, two entrees with a starting investment, and two desserts in that time. And they sat there and we're watching the clock go down twenty, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, seven seconds left. And I can remember, Kelsey said to, Kelsey said to him, you need to put that plate down. And I'm sitting there thinking in my mind, this kid's gonna drop the plate on the floor, he's just gonna drop it because she said, put the plate down. As the clock hit one second, he put that plate on the platter and to see them raise their hands and say, done. And they didn't really understand what that meant. But to realize and look at Kelsey's face, who was the team anchor that day, we're all sitting there just bawling, I'm just bawling. And it wasn't even the fact that they finished, but when they finished fourth, that whole room of students from across the state of Michigan stood up and stood for them louder than they did for one, two, and three. So, for the high school kids to understand that passion and what we can do in our classrooms, I know Andrew and I have sat down, see, you're a tear-up too. Andrew and I have sat down many times as we're trying to figure out, how do we, how do we work these programs together? Because everybody deserves opportunity. Look at the facilities and out-there restaurants and hospitality as a food industry for, for the disabled student. So many opportunities out there. So, Andrew and I, I think, talked about this before, five years, Jamie and I have talked about it, we're working on some things right now. So, I don't know if that answered your question, I know you wanted me to tear up, that's why you asked it. But that, you know, that's a passion for me to see any kid succeed in the classroom. And success is measured in so many different ways, and for us, that was success, and those kids finished in sixty minutes. And they just had smiles on their faces. People said, how, what, I, I can't tell you how many teachers came up to me before, said, what are you doing? I mean, we were winning these competitions every year in one of the nationals. What are you doing? So, I'm gonna show you what we can do in the classroom, that's what we're doing. So, when they did that, and I went back to Scott's, what do you think? Not, I'm just like, wow. So, I hope that answered your question. Thanks.
Thank you. We have one additional student who's with us today, she's gonna be helping out in the food truck, Jemaya, Jemaya Kimbrow, is that right? Thank you very much for your, your introduction, thank you for being with us to, today as well. Um, I did have the opportunity to visit the Talent Center last year, I was, I was in the kitchen, it was inspiring and intimidating at the, at the same time, which is why I'm gonna be on the other side of the food truck, um, this, uh, this afternoon. The, the notion of CTE expansion is one of the things, board, you know that I said that I thought we needed to work on as a state, not just as a department, but as a state, I think we're missing some opportunities in this area. I also think, by the way, that this fits nicely into the governor's initiative of sixty by thirty, that, uh, you're preparing young people not simply to graduate from high school, but to go on and get additional credentials and to, uh, really follow their dreams in, in one way, shape, or form, so I applaud you in, in that respect. Just a translation, FCC LA, because we had an FCC LA team in, in Kalamazoo, uh, but everybody doesn't. Can you translate for us?
Family, community, family, career, community leaders of America.
Very good, and it's a national organization?
National organization.
Um, with, um, with regional, state, and, or district, state, and national competition?
National competition. So, for, for us personally, we compete in hospitality, tourism, culinary arts, baking, entrepreneurship, sports nutrition, cupcake battle, serving up success. So, I'm on the state board for FCC LA, and we're in the process of opening up more opportunities for our kids to be in many different areas. Like we said, we went to Anaheim, people like, they just went to Anaheim for a week. But they don't understand the amount of time that these kids put in to their presentations. These guys were up in their room at four, five o'clock in the morning and they didn't leave until they were done, and then they're going through presentation, changing boards and... You know, we get nervous about that, and they're like, coach, we got it, coach, we got it, all right, we're gonna let you do it. And then, we, they come out and we see how they, how they presented, it's, it just blows my mind, if they can put together a full restaurant that's just seventeen. Send their ideas, be successful at it. I know you said that restaurant is placed in Detroit, but it's not there.
No, it's not actually there.
All right, so for the competition, we have a full... Also, the... So, I did a mini... Large glass table.
So, it was, our restaurant was completely based off of the movie Alice in Wonderland. And so, we, um, the table during tea time that we, that they have, we completely like replicated that. He was actually FaceTiming me while I was at work, and we're trying to figure out what the heck we wanna do. And so, I'm on the phone with him, trying to do all my work for my, um, student internship. And then, when we got to California, we were sitting in the rooms like Chef Dave said, at four or five in the morning until midnight, trying to figure out how exactly we wanted our board. And, yeah, it was, it was a moving experience.
That's, um, you are, you are impressive students, and Chef, you of course are, are an impressive leader, we appreciate you, we appreciate your presentation today. Let's give them a big round of applause. We are looking forward to seeing you at noon, and, and I know the board is not going to wanna be late for that.
Please know, when you guys come out, if there's a line, just come to the front window, we'll take care of you guys, tonight, guys have business to take care of.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is hard to imagine anything topping Food for Thought. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda, however, is the presentation of two thousand and nineteen state assessment results. And so, we moved from, uh, food, uh, for the body to Food for Thought. Michigan Department of Education oversaw another successful administration of the state's assessment system this past spring. In two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, the state's M-step scores are the closest to an apples-to-apples comparison in the five years of the M-steps administration. This year again, over ninety-nine percent of our students participated in M-step online, and we also transitioned successfully to PSAT eight-nine in grade eight. Despite the record number of snow days in many of our districts last winter, this year's, uh, results showed many schools, uh, either increasing or maintaining their scores from the preceding year. This presentation board is informational and requires no board action. To present to us today are Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Supports, and Mr. Andy Middlestead, Director of Educational Assessment and Accountability, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning, board. That is certainly a hard act to follow, I appreciate Dr. Rice's enthusiastic lead-in to transition us into our assessment presentation for the M-step two thousand and nineteen results. Andy is going to start us off.
Yes, I made a mental note to bring an assessment snack truck next year. We're really digging out of a hole right now, jumping into assessment, so, uh, here we go. We're happy to share with you, uh, some updates from, uh, this last year's assessment cycle. Our presentation is kind of divided into three sections, we're gonna talk some about how the administration went this last spring. Then, we're gonna talk about the results from this last spring, and then finally, we'll talk a little bit about, uh, the future and what we're planning, and some about the read-by-grade-three legislation that's out there. So, I'm gonna kick us off and talk about the most recent administration this last spring. Some of this, Dr. Rice, already alluded to, again, in the spring in two thousand and nineteen for the M-step, we're over ninety-nine percent online in terms of the number of students that are actually taking the assessment online for the M-step. That's similar to where we were last year, but again, I'm, I won't do this slide forever and ever because we're there, but it really, again, is just a testimony to how hard schools have worked over the last five years with technology to move in this direction, to allow their students to take part in, uh, online assessment. Uh, and then, our preliminary reports are available to schools within twenty-four to forty-eight hours after a student completes an entire assessment. And then, again, this year, all of the state, uh, data and reports were out before Labor Day. This slide talks about, uh, how smoothly the administration's been going. Uh, that first table on the right talks about the number of incident reports. This is basically a, a metric around the number of phone calls we get during a test administration. It doesn't mean something was wrong, but it means, uh, we received a comment or a call saying, we need help with this, or this was funny, we need to help. But again, between fifteen and nineteen, uh, that number has drastically decreased. So, again, a testament to the hard work that folks are doing around the state. Testing time, uh, as we've talked about before, we've reduced that time down to, uh, three to five hours for M-step. And the Michigan merit exam is around eight hours. So, that's really been some hard work we've done over the years to get that testing time down. Uh, one new thing that we had in two thousand and nineteen was, this was our first year where we transitioned in eighth grade for math and English language arts from the M-step to the PSAT eight-nine. Uh, we've talked about that before, uh, we did that transition this year, so all of our eighth graders took the PSAT eight-nine, uh, kind of as an entry point to the college board's, uh, assessment suite, uh, because they do take the PSAT again in ninth grade, uh, the PSAT in tenth grade, and then, as you know, the SAT is part of our Michigan merit exam. Uh, there is a couple of differences, so the PSAT at this time is a paper pencil-based test, so students were doing this, again, back with, you know, a paper booklet and Scantron form that we're all familiar with, so that was different this year. And, uh, it does not have, um, some of the same administration rules and processes that the M-step does. So, even though there were some differences in terms of how the test was administered, it did go very well this year. Uh, again, a lot of hard work by folks around the state, uh, to make sure this is a successful transition. Moving forward, as we start to talk about the results from this year's, uh, test, uh, third and fourth grade English language arts score saw some modest gains for the second straight year. Uh, Dr. Rice mentioned in his introduction that, um, with all of the changes we've done with the M-step over time, and there was a slide about this later on, the eighteen and the nineteen school years is really the first time we're looking at an apples-to-apples comparison. You know, we did not take content out, uh, we did not, uh, change administration modes. Again, we've been at that ninety-nine percent online for a couple of years now for most schools, uh, so, uh, we've been glad to see some modest gains in that third and fourth grade. Uh, it could be a sign that Michigan's efforts in early childhood and early literacy are really taking root. Uh, and then, uh, as we all know, there was a lot of snow days or cold days, certainly this last winter. And one of the conversations we had at the department was, how are we gonna tackle assessment with the decrease of instructional days around the state? And we did offer some extra testing time, uh, to the testing window, so there's some flexibility on that end. But we were encouraged that many of our districts maintain their scores or increased, even with those fewer instructional days. Uh, the first table we have here, uh, is our English language arts scores. Again, the, I don't know if I'd call that yellow or tan, but, uh, on the far right is the percent change from eighteen to nineteen. Again, we really wanna focus on the eighteen to nineteen comparison and not look back much farther than that. But the, the, I'm gonna call it yellow. Uh, the yellow highlighted boxes are where there's increases and the blues are where there's decreases. Uh, so again, we've been encouraged that in third and fourth grade especially, we're starting to see some gains in those scores. Uh, and on this chart in the next one, you'll note that the eighth grade, uh, has a, an A in that table. That's because the PSAT that we're doing in eighth and ninth grade is a totally different assessment. We don't want to compare results on that with last year's M-step per se. So, we're starting a new trend line in the eighth grade because we switched instruments, it's a whole different way to measure it. So, you won't see a gain or a, a loss in that category for ELA or mathematics table here in the next one. Uh, this is the mathematics chart, again, some gains there. I do like to call out that, you know, we are looking at ups and downs, uh, zero-point-five, zero-point-three, one percent. You know, some of this is fairly normal as we go year to year, uh, that these scores will fluctuate up and down. You know, so, while we are encouraged, we don't want to put, uh, a lot of onus on a point-three gain, for example. So, I just like to keep it in mind with folks. And again, in eighth grade, uh, we're starting a new trend line with PSAT, and we'll look at those scores here in a moment. Social studies, declines here in social studies. Uh, I do know we are beginning to look at a timeline on the, the new social studies assessment that we'll work on, uh, to go in line with the standards. So, stay tuned for that, but, uh, we do see some declines here in social studies and certainly we want to work on that. Uh, these are our SAT scores over time, so on the top, uh, it's English language arts, so in, on the SAT, the ELA test is called, actually, the evidence-based reading and writing exam. Uh, so, there was a decrease there, so when I said earlier, I don't get too worked up about a point-three or a point-two kind of thing, we see a minus four-and-a-half percent drop here in English language arts. So, that is something that we're monitoring, that does say something to me. So, uh, we are having lots of conversations with the college board, and we even had one yesterday about, hey, what's going on here? Uh, I've talked with some other state assessment leaders from around the country and they're seeing some of these declines as well. So, we're digging into that, uh, to see what's happening, uh, with that SAT exam, because certainly we don't want to see these types of decreases, especially on, you know, the key component of our Michigan merit exam moving forward.
So, just a few more slides to round out the presentation. Uh, we did want to take a moment and talk about the M-step and the read-by-grade-three law. So, as you all know, the read-by-grade-three law was adopted in two thousand and sixteen, and it requires that schools identify learners who are struggling with reading and writing and provide additional help. And so, again, this law has been on the books since two thousand and sixteen. Um, this is part, but not the entirety of our literacy efforts. Um, we do things around literacy that are beyond the law, but certainly, the law and its timelines have, um, pushed us as a state to put a lot of intentionality and focus on literacy in those early grades. Starting with this year, the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, the law says that performance, and this is a quote from the statute, "Performance on, quote, 'the grade-three state English language arts assessment will be one factor in determining if third graders will be promoted to fourth grade.'" But here's an important point. This year's M-step ELA proficiency scores, the overall proficiency score is not what you use to predict the percentage of students who might be retained next year. It is not the number of students who are proficient on the ELA, that's not the trigger in the law. On the next slide, we'll talk more about that. That's been a bit of a confusion in a lot of the coverage around this, so we just want to be as clear as possible to say, the percent of students who are proficient on the ELA is, is not the number that might be retained next year. M-step's performance levels, and we're required to have those, uh, by federal law for state summative assessments, they're not the same as a grade-level equivalent... assessments, they're not the same as a grade-level equivalency score, which if you go back up to the second bullet, is what the Read by Grade Three law asked for. It's if they're a grade or more behind in English or in reading. What we did do, and we presented this information to the Board last fall, I believe, yes, we have worked to establish what we call the Reading Cut Score. So we collaborated with educators and with technical experts to support what the law said, students are a grade or more behind in reading. So we created this Reading Cut Score, and then you use it, and so on the left side of the chart, you see the ELA score and the score bands that correlate with these potential retention decisions. So you see in the first score band, 0 to 1252, that is a student who is potentially subject to retention and eligible for additional support under the law. Based on this year's scores, we're predicting about 4.1% of kids would have this trigger. It's important to note, this is not the only determinant in the law for retention. There are possible exemptions, there is district discretion, there's other ways to demonstrate that you're on track for reading, but the law does require the use of the state assessment in this way. So while MDE has long been on record as not supporting required retention, we do have to work to implement the law. And again, this should not be new to you, but we're happy to talk more about any of this information, if it is, or if we want to do a refresher. We also use the score, we made a middle category, those students who are eligible for promotion, but they should receive additional support. If I were going to say it in kind of, you know, mom terms, it'd be kids who were close to that cut but not at it, kids who are kind of in the gray zone, or like the danger zone. So we would want to make sure that schools were working really intentionally with those kids as they transitioned to fourth grade. And again, districts should always be using their locally determined and administered information, other assessments, but also other information about the child's performance in understanding how to do this. The M-Step is not the whole piece of this information. And then the Cut Score of 1272 or above, these are students who are, they're eligible for promotion to grade four, they don't have, they're not even close to that kind of danger zone cut of being a grade level below in reading. So just to expand on what Andy said a little earlier about the changes our assessment system has undergone, and many of you have been at this table as it's undergone these changes, so we've lived this slide together. But to underscore the point about the comparability of results over the previous years, when you change an assessment fundamentally each year, you can't compare the results easily from year to year. The assessment is different. So you don't know necessarily that this year's scores are on the same instrument as last year's. So in the first year of the M-Step, we transitioned online, that was a whole new modality. In 2016 and 2017, we went through a series of activities to reduce testing time, and those are listed out up there. Again, that changes what students are, what sort of content students are seeing in the assessment. And then in 2018, due to legislative requirements, we cut testing time to no more than three hours on average for ELA and math, and we met that requirement. Like Andy said, this year, 18 and 19, we gave fundamentally the same type of assessment, not obviously the same questions, but the same type of assessment for the first time in the last five years. With the asterisk there of we transitioned to PSAT in eighth grade, so that starts a new trend line, but for the rest of it, it was a similar assessment. So when we're looking at trend lines, we're really talking 18 to 19. And this tiny chart that's hard to read, we always include it to show, this is our current assessment system, what is required. We require, we only require assessments that are required by state or federal law. You can also see in there, the benchmarks are listed. Those benchmark assessments are reimbursed, in this last year, they were reimbursed through state funds, but were optional for districts to use. In practice, we know many districts use them, so this has been an important state dollars And just to remind, this slide kind of just reminds the M-Step, what?
In the next one.
And the next one. What the M-Step does, it's given to students in grades three through seven in ELA and math, and then it's given to students in grades five, eight, and 11 on science and social studies. So we do that once per grade level. And then the PSAT 8-9, we give it in grade eight for ELA and math. And then it is optional and paid for by the state in grades nine and 10, if a district wishes to use it. And then Andy used the words Michigan Merit Exam. So we tend to talk about the high school assessment as the SAT and then the M-Step. Really, the overarching term for that is the Michigan Merit Exam. That's in law going back a number of years. And it's interesting, Michigan was one of the first states to require the use of an exam like the SAT or ACT. It was an equity issue at that time, giving more students access, it reduces one barrier to potential post-secondary transitions to have access to a college entrance exam as part of the state assessment. And that remains in law now. So we give the SAT, we give the M-Step in science and social studies, and then our law still requires the use of a work skills assessment, we give the ACT work keys. And then I already alluded to this, so I won't spend much more time here. The state reimburses for vendor-provided benchmark assessments if a district chooses to use them. This was our assessment schedule, or this is our assessment schedule, coming up in 2020. Andy, is there anything you want to point out here that they might be?
No, this should look fairly familiar to most folks. We have not changed the design, if you will, of what the assessment and testing window and schedule looks like. We're always reviewing things and trying to work out how best to do this, taking into account both how best to administer the assessment, but also working a lot with districts about how best to fit this in. I like to use the word "assessment footprint." We like to have the smallest assessment footprint as possible in the spring to, again, it goes back to minimizing disruption of instructional time. Certainly doesn't take four weeks for a student to take an assessment themselves, but that's that footprint that does kind of overlay on a school's, you know, calendar. So this is fairly similar to before, that you have seen before.
And looking forward, you know, we are always committed to our continuous improvements in our assessment system, and look forward to, as Dr. Rice moves forward with his overall vision for the state, how we can continue to have assessment be a part of that vision, but not be the whole story. You know, for a long time, you've heard me say at this table, "We don't want assessment accountability to be the whole story." There are supports to help us drive our work and drive supports toward students, schools, and districts who need it most. So we look forward to continuing toward that goal of Michigan's assessment system being a tool that we can use as we work toward our goals as a state. Dr. Rice?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Board members, questions? Comments, concerns, fears, phobias, neuroses? President Albridge?
Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of quick questions. One, if I remember correctly, isn't there pending legislation to eliminate the ACT work keys? And do you know where that is, or perhaps we can wait for our...
I think it's a, I think it's a good, good time to have that, have that conversation. Do you want to share?
Last I have heard, it has gone through several committees. I believe it's with the Senate at this time. We will double-check before Marty gives the presentation, but I think it went through the House. I think it's stuck in a Senate committee somewhere at this point.
And the MDE has been vocally supportive of it consistently. Again, in an era of cutting testing time, it would be an easy way to save student, high school students, three hours and save the state some money that we could certainly invest in something else, so thank you.
One additional question, if I may. So I think that the reason that there's so much confusion with the third-grade reading bill, the graph that you put up there shows that, as of right now, if we were to approximate based on these test scores, it would be about 4.1% that would be subject to retention. And yet, on slide eight, yeah, it's very small, it says that only 45.1% are advanced or proficient. So that tells me that there's a huge number of students, or percentage of students, that fall within that in-between gap. So my, my question is, is there an issue with our cut scores? Because if you're not reaching proficient, but you're less than one year behind, you know, what does that say about the cut score? I mean, that's a large gap of people, and it's, I'm just questioning whether it's misleading to say roughly 50% are not proficient, and yet only 4.1% are eligible for retention.
Yeah. I think that's a really good question, and you absolutely found the core of why this is confusing. So our, our cut score, the proficient cut score, like we said in the presentation, is not about being on grade level, it's about having mastery of enough content to be considered proficient. So it is, in some sense, a relatively high bar. So if you think about like, I don't know if Andy would like this illustration, but I'm going to use it. If you think about the scale this way, and like, here's the proficiency cut, and here's the end of the scale, like, we're talking, we need to find the kids who are like down here, like a grade level behind, almost in some sense, not at the very, very end of the scale. Because the scale is built to talk about if kids are learning the content that they need in grade three and to what extent. So there are even middle cuts before proficient, there's the partially proficient, right?
Yes.
And then not proficient, and those still are kids who have learned some of the grade level content but aren't where we would need them to be to say that they're proficient. So whether or not there's a problem with the cut score, I think that's a good question to continue exploring, but it's not necessarily surprising that there would be a gap.
But proficient is, is a term we've made up, right? So there has to be like an actual measurable that I think makes sense that goes with it. And maybe it's a language issue more than it's a cut score issue, because to me, saying you're proficient means you've hit the bare minimum of what we need, but it sounds like your, the bare minimum is maybe really high, and, and the reality is that students are actually doing fairly well, but we're not ladling them appropriately.
Right. Let me try to help by talking about this, and maybe we can send the Board some documentation around how we come up with these cut scores for proficiency and how, what we did for this, because part of that is, there is language around what does a proficient student for third-grade English language arts look like. And what we did, well, it's over a year ago at this point, is we sat down with elementary educators and administrators and say, "Folks, how can you help us figure this law out?" Because I think Vanessa alluded to it, that the test they're telling us to use for this wasn't designed to compute a number that they're asking for, so we needed to come up with a compromise. And what we did is we sat down with these educators and said, "Please describe to us, using words, what a student you think looks a grade level behind in terms of how they're performing." And that's what they used to go through the standard-setting process to come up with that other bar, because you're absolutely right, this is what we've been saying, this is confusing and hard to sort out, because even the law, how it's written, is confusing to start with. So it's going to take us some work to untangle it, but maybe we can share some of that language saying, "Here's what educators came up with to describe what a student that is proficient on English language arts as a whole for ESSA requirements looks like, and then what does this student that might be in this 4.1% look like?" Because we actually had the teachers help us talk through, since we can't, since the test does not spit out a number saying you're at a grade level of 2.1 or 2.8, what do you think these students look like?
I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah. We can send that to you folks, and oftentimes, it allows, helps with the numbers a little bit, if we can explain what we're describing and what kinds of students we're trying to target.
I want to just add one small thing to what Andy said, your point about proficient means bare minimum. There was a time in our state assessment where that's what proficient meant. Around the time of Race to the Top, ESCE flexibility, and then ESSA does this as well, it asks states to define proficient as a higher bar. Students who are on track to career and college-ready, which I know this Board has, wants to discuss that as well. So calling out that you're absolutely right, that what proficient means is a higher bar than it has been, and that there could, there's a good conversation to have around what does proficient actually mean. To meet federal accountability requirements, what the test has to do, they expect to see evidence that it meets this higher bar. And that is a change, though, in the last six years, probably. We, 2011, I think, is when we redefined what proficient meant in the state.
Yeah.
Which makes it even more confusing, right?
As a language person, I think language matters considerably, and when you use, when you redefine terms like that, that's where people, you know, confusion comes in, and then you get bad public policy, because, "Oh, the world is on fire and no kid's learning anything," when that isn't what it means at all. So, thank you.
It's a great point. Ms. Tilly, I've got you, just give me one second, because I think a little bit of clarity here at this moment could be helpful. We had low-bar meet in the state for approximately four decades. We moved to high-bar meet in 2011. We redefined the preceding four years with a higher standard. So we redefined what proficiency was effective 2011, both prospectively for the, for the following couple of years and retrospectively for four years, if I recall correctly. When M-Step hit, we took the high-bar meet and made it higher still. So the term proficiency in the state of Michigan has taken on a number of different castes, to your point, over the past decade, and it most assuredly should not be considered a bare minimum by any stretch of the imagination at this point. It is not a bare minimum test. All of these tests, all of these state tests, and particularly ours, have been ramped up over the last decades. That's one point. The second point is, M-Step is an ELA test. The Read by Grade Three law is not an ELA standard, it is a reading standard. They overlap, they are not the same. That's the second point. The third point is that M-Step proficiency is supposed to be a high-bar, grade-level proficiency, whereas the Read by Grade Three standard is more than a grade level behind, not in ELA, but rather in reading. They are not analogous, they overlap, but they are not analogous, and there is a lot of complexity. Ms. Tilly, to your question.
With the third-grade reading law, from my understanding, there, there are some schools where the whole class could be held behind. And then there's also an opportunity for parents to opt out of that and let their children progress. Do you know, I've heard it's a portfolio. Do you know what it entails, and then what's being done to make sure it's being promoted?
So yes, it is true that there will, that 4.1% does not distribute evenly across all schools. So some will have very few, and some will have a lot, who may be subject to retention. I want to keep using that careful language there, because no school should take the M-Step score and say, "This is absolutely the decision for this child." That is a piece of the decision. And then yes, there, there are a number of exemptions available in the law. Parental exemption is one. That's actually separate from the portfolio assessment.
Yes.
So you could also demonstrate grade level, being on track for grade level, or demonstrate literacy through a portfolio, or you can use parent exemption. A parent can just simply say, "I don't want my child retained."
Oh, they, that's all they have to do. Because I was, the way it was explained to me is that they have to put together a portfolio.
I think there's what the, what the law says, and then ideally, parents and a school would have a careful conversation about all the evidence around a child and make a good decision about retention versus not. And in not retention, then what supports are you going to get? So that's where looking at a portfolio, even if it's not the path you use for an exemption, it still would be important to look at other pieces of evidence to understand where the child is strong and where they're going to need additional help. The law is trying to prevent schools from just moving kids ahead without addressing their, their reading deficiencies. So keeping to that intent of the law and the urgency that we need as a state around getting all of our students literate is important, even while we look for the flexibilities that the law offers.
What's being done to, for those students, to let the parents know, the, the schools know, the districts know, and so that they can understand, fully understand the law and the exemptions?
And it may be good to spend more time on this in a, in its own presentation sometime soon with the Board, if, if that's something the Board would like. We are, we are communicating a lot with districts. We put together a parent toolkit, notification letters, things that they use. I think you are picking up something that we are also tracking and worried about, is how our districts communicating to parents, and what else can we as a department do to support that, because it's really important that every parent understands this. And we know there can be gaps in communication to parents that often relate, it can often be an equity issue as well. So sometimes the parents we communicate with least well, may be the parents who most need this information. And I'm not sure we have an excellent solution to that. So we need to partner with... So we need to partner with districts and schools. And again, if the board has thoughts on how we could get that message out, we, I think we really need to work together on that.
Other, um, other questions, Ms. Fecto?
Just a couple. And, and I was, uh, to Cassandra's point. I, I know the NATE does the same thing. We hold proficient as being, um, yeah, that's the, I think, the highest. And then basic is more average. But people often use the NATE scores to say, oh, you know, the, all these people that are not proficient are failing. And that's not how the definition there works.
That, that, that's true. It's a high, it's a high bar, um, test. It ought not to be used analogously with basic proficiency, not at all. This is not, this is not what we were subject to back in the day. What I was subject to back in the day. You were educated much, uh, much more recently than I was.
Yeah, shut up. That's a lie. All right, so, um, I got me all flustered. Okay. So I, I, I see, you know, I've always been curious about the cost of testing. How much money does the state spend on testing? So you, they, and I've never gotten a, a clear answer to that. And it says it, but it says they were reimbursed in one of the slides, that the state reimbursed the cost of some of the testing at least. I'm just curious how much that was, that the reimbursement was? And if I could get a number of, you know, I, I mean, I'm assuming each test has a cost and just multiply it by the amount of people who took the test. So I, and, and, and I, you know, and it seems, I would, it'd be interesting to see how much money that is and if it could be better spent. But, um, then, I'm also, where, where Tiffany is going. I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, we look at the state average, but it's, it's so variable across the state, the scores. And the communities that are, um, gonna be hit the highest, uh, hardest are, are the ones with the, the least resources to address it. And, um, so I'm, I'm, um, I'm also concerned, I'm also curious about the testing. Because I know with the M-Step, there, so I'm looking at the population, where there's IEPs and, or cognitive disabilities or disabilities. And I know there's a rule that you can only have like 1% of the kids take an alternative test. So I know that in, at least in Detroit, and I know in other, uh, parts of the state, where particularly where there's a lot of charter schools, that don't take these kids or don't have the services for these kids. They end up being concentrated in the traditional public schools, in the, in the community. Or in some places, it's like 40% IEPs. I'm wondering about the impact of this on those schools. And, um, and so there's a separate reading test, which is good to know. So, so is everyone required to take this, whatever the reading test is, to determine, who is gonna be held back? Is that, who is, everybody takes that? And I know IEPs, they don't, they, they, they can opt out if they have an IEP. They don't have to be held back. But I'm just wondering, all, in terms of resources.
We'll work backward on your questions, maybe, if that, did you have another one or?
No, that's it, that's it.
There is not a separate reading test. They take the M-Step ELA. And then we, like Andy was explaining, we got the educators together and we came up with these cut scores that derive from that test, but are based on parts of the content that relate to reading specifically and are, help us understand those kids who are grade level behind or more. So everybody takes the M-Step ELA. And thus, we can get the score on all kids who take the general assessment, to your point. My Access, any student taking My Access is exempt from this, so we don't have a similar thing. So a little over 1% in Michigan.
Just under 2%, actually.
I mean, so, but it, but it's by school? So if you have a school like in Flint, they have so many kids now with I, with IEPs, they only get 1% to opt out?
For the alternate assessment.
But they, they only have 1% to go?
You can, well, it's around 1%. Again, there's some, districts have some flexibility to go over that if, if necessary. But in general, that is how the federal statute is. And Scott may want to at some point talk more about the special ed laws and students taking the general assessment and the intersection there.
Right. One of the things we do to try, we don't, we don't talk about it as a, uh, school district or school X. You can only do 1%. We provide all the guidance we can to help these schools identify students that will fall into this population. And then we have to look at the percent at the end of the day.
So we, the state.
We, the state.
It's, so it's 1% for the whole state, so?
Right.
And we go over that.
Right.
We, we really want students taking the most appropriate assessment based on their IEP. And if what they should be taking is the alternate assessment, then they need to take the alternate assessment. Having a student sit for the general assessment when it's not appropriate based on their IEP is unethical and a waste of everyone's time. So we, we work toward that. And there's some technicalities around how we do it. So, to your point, though, are kids clustered in certain schools? Are there schools with greater levels of IEPs? Yes. And how does that impact with this law and with other laws? I think that's an excellent point.
Dr. Pritchett.
That's a good question.
Your question. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Back to one of the first slides, talking about the timeliness of getting the results out, et cetera. It's my understanding, kind of, because I've got a couple of granddaughter's. Parents did not receive the official results until school started this year. So if I look at the law, the reading law, this next June, any student who falls within this, um, cut score level of not reaching proficiency or being a grade level behind, or however we're gonna decide that, will receive notification, have to receive notification sometime by June 30th, if I remember the law. Yet there will be other parents who will still be in a holding pattern waiting for their results. Now, it's not something that parents talk about every day of the week and go, oh gee, I wish we had M-Step results.
Wish they did.
Yeah, except for a few third graders. I guess I'm wondering, you know, how is that gonna be handled? Or is there a plan to try to get those results out to all parents by June 1st?
So, uh, you've hit right on one of the things that's given us lots of anxiety over the last year because the, the deadline, if I remember right, is actually like May 23rd or something in the legislation, which is technically before we've even finished testing. So how to make this work has been a challenge that we're really partnering with SEPI on because in the law, it says SEPI needs to send certified mail home to these students that are identified in that 4.1%. What we've been able to do is run some analysis to say, for this purpose, these preliminary results are giving us good enough data for these letters to go home. So we have to get these letters home. Is it our ideal? No. But if we have to meet this May whatever deadline to get these letters home for these 4.1% of students, this is what we have to do to meet that rule. Are we able to move up the, the parent report that, uh, it gets to the school's hands before Labor Day? How quick the school hands them out to the parents and up to them? Not necessarily, because we have to wait for several other components that factor into this. One of the reasons, um, we have to do that is there's still a large writing essay component on the M-Step. So that takes time to hand score with educators and things after the fact. That's not necessary to compute this Read by Grade Three cut that we're working on. So, right now, that's our plan. Is it a perfect solution? Not yet, but we're working with it that way to try to say, we have the ability to run some numbers and send these letters by, uh, May whatever. And we will do that with SEPI. And we're working on some communication processes around that. Uh, and then we'll have to do our parent reports and our school reports on our normal timelines before Labor Day. So it's a challenge, uh, but we're trying to do the best we can to meet the letter of the law and still make sure we can give out the best, uh, parent reports we can at the end of the summer.
Thank you. Ms. McMillan?
I just wanna, let's understand, the, the, um, results of these assessments that we're going over are gonna be used, uh, for the A to F. And I know we're gonna talk about that next, but it's gonna be used on the A to F, uh, in some way. Growth, proficiency. Now, all the schools, though, I mean, I know that there's 99% of the schools administered online. But to be very clear, I mean, they weren't all administered the same way. Or to, you know, I mean, there were some that, uh, the quality of the computers might have been significantly better or worse. Is that right? Or, um, the ability of kids on computers, their computer skills in taking the test might have been significantly better or worse. The environment, I mean, you know, there might have been, we saw kids taking, maybe taking tests and libraries packed with stuff that was not conducive to being looked, the attention. And quite frankly, there, there may be kids that don't care and kids that do care more in certain, in some areas or whatever. So I mean, you know, we're, I guess I just wanted to put it a little bit in the context that, um, and what a lot of us believe, that these tests are not necessarily all that useful, uh, to begin with. But there's just a lot of, of, it wasn't done the same way in every school with every child. You know, I think that that just needs to be solved, right? Some, some of the things I'm talking about, is that true?
You're, yes, in the sense that, um, any assessment you give of anything, there's error involved in the measurement, right? No measurement is perfect. We do, schools go through a lot of training to give, and there's a lot of requirements, which is actually kind of what makes state standardized assessment a little harder, about how you administer it, under what conditions. There's scripts and manual, it's, it's a standardized process. You called out some things that even within a standardized process might be less standardized. That there was noisy trucks outside, there was whatever. So there is, did everybody take it in the same room at the same time under the exact same conditions? No. That is accurate.
And I understand that when you get enough people or enough, uh, takers, that it's average. However, when you have, when you're gonna be grading an F or a D or a C in a particular school, and that school had, you know, loud noises outside, I mean, there, then the averages don't work out. School, that school, and, and for whatever, all, all the other items, the computers, the things, there were problems. I mean, what happens if a school loses power during the, anyway? And then also, I just wanted to make it, I found it interesting that as we go through these, the 0.3% was not that big of a deal. I understand that it could sway, I mean, I see sometimes there were big drops a few years ago, and now there's increases. So, you know, this notion, and, uh, divert just briefly, but this notion that, you know, get rid of the state board because we gotta hold the governor accountable. We need one person held accountable. Anybody that looks at this, they're not gonna say, okay, ELA fifth graders dropped 0.3, so you know what, we need to start investing in those fifth graders who are gonna be in sixth grade and, and try to target. It's just, these things are, you know, and even, you know, it just is not, uh, and some people might say, well, it's good for the trends. Well, it depends from one governor. You know, a lot of this stuff takes years to filter through and actually have results. And not only that, but trends take years. So you're only gonna hold the governor accountable for the second election. So I mean, for, so I just, I, I'd like to just, as we look at these numbers, and I agree, I mean, what are we gonna do when something went down 0.2% uh, in one year, but had gone up a couple percent in prior year and down, you know? It's not like we're gonna change policy here today based on these results. And the one area where there was significant change, there's probably a problem with the, with the, um, governing board, the college board, which has all kinds of problems, so, from what I understand. So, you know, it's just, um, I don't know. I mean, as we're listening to this, uh, I appreciate it. But, you know, I, I'm just not sure, it's not gonna change policy. You know, we can speculate on why the third and fourth graders, it's a fruition of early childhood. But then if the numbers go down, we're gonna say something else next year or something. So, I, I don't know, it's just, um, as we're going through, okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other board members with any other questions or comments? Dr. Pritchett, you have the benediction and a short one at that.
Thank you. One quick question. I noticed next year that we're doing the SAT, or it's scheduled anyways, for the Monday after the first full week in April, when most schools in Michigan, and I know some districts have changed that, are on spring break. And I know that's been a concern, especially from the high school principals. Is there any chance that that can be moved even to that Tuesday?
I am, um, is there a chance? I'm not gonna say if there's a chance or not. Sheila's waving at me.
Oh, I should.
Please, yeah.
I have done in communication with College Board on behalf of many of the districts, asked that the SAT last two days be changed. I've been told that because of contracts, the testing dates never. They'll be exploring, yes, the state will administer best methods as part of the statewide assessment system, alter the testing dates, add similar costs to the state. Thank you.
It's a, it's a valid concern. We would prefer that those be moved for 2020. We hope that they'll be moved for 2021. You're right, never say never. But, um, it, it, it appears that the door is closing on that issue for 2020. It's more likely for 2021. That, that would help us out, that would help us out in a variety of different ways. Just, um, one or two, uh, additional notes. Notwithstanding the concerns about variability that Mr. McMillan raises in testing protocol across schools. 18 versus 19 is the closest thing to an apples-apples comparison that we have in five years of M-Step. That's important for the board to understand and by, by extension, for the broader community to understand. There was less change cross-years than in any two consecutive years in the five-year suite of, of M-Step testing. That's important. And Mr. McMillan notes the decline from 17 to 18, but there was a profound change in the test. The performance tasks were pulled out of fifth and eighth grade ELA, and the results plummeted as a, uh, as a result of that, of that change. That's one piece. To Ms. Fecto's question about the financial costs of testing and the reimbursement of those costs by local school districts. We are reimbursing financial costs. Those are the costs to which you refer. We are not reimbursing, nor can we reimburse, the opportunity cost of testing. And there's most assuredly an opportunity cost of testing. This board has raised that issue in the past. And we have skinny back the test, to our credit, over a period of years. That's good news. With the reduction in the amount of testing, uh, comes the increase in the amount of instructional time. We do not want the assessment tail to wag the instruction dog at all, if we can avoid it in this, in this state. We appreciate your presentation. Would that we could go for another hour or two on this riveting subject. Thank you both. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is an update on accountability systems. This presentation provides an overview of Michigan's three systems of accountability, with particular attention to the requirements and implementation of Public Act 601, the so-called A through F law. Michigan Department of Education team will provide a brief overview of our parent dashboard for school transparency, a board which you worked on extensively, and the school index system. And then discuss the requirements of the PA 601 law, as well as the points of decision-making discretion allowed by the law. Our goal with this presentation is to engage the board in a conversation regarding these systems and the A through F system in particular. Here, uh, today, in part because she didn't have enough time on the last presentation and she enjoys these presentations so much, is Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, our Deputy Superintendent for Educator-Student School Supports, and Mr. Chris Janzer, Director of Educational Assessment and Accountability. Gentleman.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And thank you, board, for allowing me to stay at the table for a second presentation and talk about my second favorite subject, accountability. And my division includes things that, beyond assessment and accountability, but I, uh, usually get the privilege of talking about these, which I enjoy. So like Dr. Rice led off talking about, we want to spend a little bit of time today talking about Michigan's accountability landscape as an entirety. Although the presentation will focus a lot on PA 601, the A to F law, we wanted to take a moment and talk about our three systems and how they interact. The first component, and really what we would say is the flagship component of the system, is our parent dashboard for school transparency. As you all remember, because we co-developed it together over a multi-month of year-long process, really, this was launched in January 2018. And it provides this large amount of information to parents in a transparent way. It doesn't have labels or judgments, and it allows parents to go and say, what do I want to know about this school, and what judgments do I want to make? And we'll spend time in another And we'll spend time in another slide celebrating the dashboard in a little bit further. Uh, the second part of our accountability system, developed around the same time as the parent dashboard. Under our Every Student Succeeds Act negotiations, the, the many months of that, the second part of our accountability system was the school index system. And again, we're going to spend more time in, in future slides on this one, so here I will just remind us that it was developed during ESSA as the part of the system that met the federal requirements around accountability. The feds had certain things our accountability system had to do, we wanted to figure out a system that did those and allowed us to identify schools in need of additional supports. That's really the main use of the index, is to help us drive um, additional supports through the partnership district model primarily. And then the third system, um, that is now going to be part of our accountability landscape, is, is PA 601, the A to F law, um, which was passed in December, and like I said, will be the major focus of today's presentation. But before we get there, let's take just a minute and celebrate where we are at with the parent dashboard. Uh, it has been one of our most successful, it's, it's really the most successful website um, or tool that the department has put up with data. That may be a low bar, um, considering some of our different tools we've put up over the years, I have helped put them up, but it's, it's wildly outperformed, I think, our expectations. So we had 1.5 million views in eighteen months, and you sent information.
Yeah, I just got uh, something from our partners over at SEPI today, they provide us monthly updates to views on my school data, and um, I want to say, uh, so August of 2019 was probably the second largest month in terms of page views that we've had since uh, we implemented it, and we had almost 160,000 page views in August, which is tremendous for a, a page on my school data.
So it's, it's being used, it's easy to use, uh, it has really versatile search functions. Again, we so appreciate the partnership of the board throughout the development of this, to help us get it right. Get it right for all of our consumers, all of our stakeholders, and the partnership of parents who worked with us on this. The dashboard lets us present the school performance, uh, relative similar schools, so we can, I used it twice this week to look that up myself, because it's interesting to know how a school compares to schools that are similar to it. And again, the key part of the dashboard is we've, we work together to find a way to put up a lot of information about schools that are of interest to parents and different stakeholders, but create an interface where the parent can decide, or the stakeholder can decide which factors are important. And they can get that clear data easily and make their own judgments. So we are really excited about the dashboard. Second part of the system is the index. Um, again, the most important part of the index is it allows us to check the box in our federal accountability system and do what we're required to do there, and help us drive supports, but we don't tend to talk a lot about the index, we don't, it's not, we want people looking at the dashboard for information, not necessarily the index. Michigan had a time when it was all about the labeling, and we want to move away from that. We've, we've talked about that in the context of ESSA, that it's not just about, it's actually not about labeling at all, right? It's about information and about supporting schools and districts. So we run the index, we give it out, but it is not something that we drive a lot of attention to, because we want people looking at the dashboard. Just a couple things about the index. Uh, schools receive credit in each area based on the degree to which they meet a target, so they have a target, and how close they get to it, they get points for that. They do get an overall index value, that ranges from zero to 100, and then they get index values in each individual area. And then, like I said, we use this, schools with low index values, we um, they are identified as one of these three low-performing school types that, that ESSA law requires us to identify. This weighting should look familiar to you, but perhaps not, so just to rest here for a minute and talk about it, this is how we take the components of the index system and sum them up into that zero to 100 grade, um, label indicator. So student growth is weighted the highest in this overall indicator, that again, we negotiated and discussed in the ESSA process a lot, the importance of privileging growth above proficiency. Uh, proficiency comes in next at 29%. And then the next component is school quality, student success, and you see below, we list off what's in there. Um, we'd love to come talk to the board about some of these data points outside of the context of accountability soon, um, especially post-secondary enrollment and um, access to advanced coursework, I think, we think might be particularly interesting to the board.
To be clear on this though, if I can, because I don't want to go through everything else, but this, can I just, we talked briefly about this, can I just interrupt? The uh, this index system though is not something that this board wrestled with as far as the weighting. I remember that when, before we switched to the dashboard, it was flashed up there, some weighting, maybe even these numbers, and we all kind of said, this is not what we want to get into. And we're, I mean, this is, it, it helped facilitate us or move us towards the dashboard, saying that it's the number thirty-four, or thirty-eight, or twenty-six, or twelve, or what is this? And uh, if I recall right, and so, and then after we did the dashboard, I don't ever remember this coming back before us and saying, okay, we still need to do the index system, and let's wrestle, you know, maybe we didn't want to talk much about it or whatever, but, you know, from what I understand, that the ESSA requires that growth and proficiency release for the majority. Well, I would, I would want it at 50.1%, not 63%, which is what it is now, so if I would have been able to weigh in on this, I, it would look different than what it is now, so just for the record, we, and, and I'm not sure that we shouldn't have, I, I mean, maybe I kind of, my gut tells me we should have had this before us and approved it, I know like eight, eight or nine months ago, some of us, including myself, got asked about, you know, how come there's As and Bs and, or numbers, and this school is 89% and this is 98%? And people were talking about it, and it was like the first time I think I had remembered, you know, the, the whole index system, so, you know, I, I don't know if there was discussion before I got here about the ESSA and weighting it, uh, but when we switched to the parent dashboard, we didn't get into this, and I think perhaps we should, or I don't know if it's too late, but at some point, I, I do think, especially if it's now becoming a little more prominent because of uh, of the third system, and now we're wrestling with these systems, just wanted to throw that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I, I actually, I was planning on walking through this chart and then pausing for a minute to answer any questions about the index, so this was a timely, timely addition to the presentation.
We can ask questions then?
Yes.
Um, so, the weight is one thing, but the algorithm that goes into determining uh, what constitutes student growth is another, and that's the part that I don't think anyone at this table, or probably um, outside of this building, could explain to anyone. So, can you kind of give an overview on how that system works?
Yep, I'd be happy to. Um, and Chris is going to help me if I need it. The, so when we do student growth, we are talking about individual student level growth, where, how a student's performance changed from third grade to fourth grade. Uh, we use something called a student growth percentile, uh, we actually look at, from that, we derive an adequate growth percentile. Did they make enough growth to get to proficiency within a number of years? Um, this is, when did we start using this as a system? When we switched to M step. Um, before that, we'd used a different thing that looked at how students changed in categories, but I think your point, Cassandra, about that student growth is a complicated thing to talk about, the measurement of it is very, very accurate. Um, and so in this model, we use that, those individual growth percentiles, adequate growth, and we look at the number of students within a school who made that adequate growth. Do you want to add anything to my explanation?
Uh, that's kind of it at a high level, uh, does that help, or I can?
Now, I guess my point is, this is why I have such a problem with numbers and letters, because you can't, it's, as a parent, if I were a parent and I said, I looked at my school and it got a, you know, eighty-nine or eight-hundred-and-ninety, whatever the number is, I have no idea what that means, and why I should care, and how important it might be. Um, and that's, I guess that's just my, and I don't think you're going to be able to explain it to me at this table, because I still won't understand it. And if I don't understand it, I guarantee you 99% of the people out there aren't going to understand either.
I think, I think your point is well-taken, I think that's, that was the logic behind the parent dashboard. Put out the widest range of data, let people decide what is important to them, let people dig down, drill down into that data to the extent that they want, and make determinations about how they are going to select their children's schools based on that, on that data. That's the wisest uh, decision, that was the decision that the board made. The uh, board though, of course, is aware that an, an ESSA-approved plan could not be the pa- parent dashboard, and that we had to put something together um, that was ESSA-provable, and that was the index system.
Yes, but how do we as a board know that the algorithms going into this are the appropriate algorithms? I don't think there's
There is no
any way that we can know that, and if we can't know that, then most people aren't going to know that either.
I don't disagree with you at all, it, it goes to the very core of the logic of these systems. To the very core of the logic of, of the systems, which are required in one way, shape, or form under the every, the federal Every Student Succeeds uh, Act. Ms. Snyder.
Do you all work with the superintendents at the local level within the index system? Um, once you have the information, and how does that inform them as they make choices at the local level, right, that, that you don't make, that we don't make? And would you say, to Cassandra's point, that, that they understand the algorithm, do they feel comfortable working with you and understanding the index and implementing um, solution locally?
I appreciate that question. Um, so we, we in general, with the accountability systems, and again, even with superintendents, we spend, we've spent a lot of effort on the dashboard, use the dashboard, communicate about the dashboard to your parents. This is the tool that we want you using the most. You are going to receive this index score. Uh, Chris and his team have developed a large suite of resources, so one-pagers, um, expl- you know, PowerPoints, uh, things to help explain it, and they spend a lot of time throughout the year out doing presentations, visits, they take lots of calls. Um, we ask that local districts look at the index and understand their strengths and weaknesses, but we always encourage them to use it in the context of a larger amount of data. Um, we work closely with the superintendents of like partnership districts, but again, that's broader than just the index. The index is really just the trigger that might have said, hey, you are going to be a partnership district, and that's not even, there's other triggers too, but then we would say, look at your index, but also we're going to do a much more comprehensive review of data that's not in the index with you to help you drive. So we do support them, but we try to do it in the context of this is one piece of information about your school.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I, I was just going to add, as we get more years under, or more experience, uh, both in the field too, people, it might, when it's new, it's new for everyone, it's new for us and all that, um, but we have found um, the number of sort of technical support calls that my team gets has drastically dropped over the last couple of years, as people have become sort of, and people being principals and um, accountability people within the districts, as they become more used to the way the index system works and, and all that sort of stuff, yeah.
Ms. Tilly, Dr. Pritchett, Mr. McMillan.
The schools that don't have English learners, does that just exclude it?
Yes, so, well, if a, if a, if any school doesn't have a category, you take the weights in that category and they redistribute into the other category. Yep.
Thank you. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. Um, the index, is it on the dashboard, or can it be found on the dashboard?
It's not on the dashboard, there's a little tab over on the side that you can get to it, um, but it's not on the dashboard. Okay. So that number does not show up in the context of the dashboard, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan.
To our president's uh, point, um, you know, growth, I used to be a big fan of growth, and I understood that it was a child that was like twenty percent proficient and gets to twenty-two, is a ten percent growth. But that's not how growth is measured, it's measure, and it, it's measured that a school that has 98% proficiency, tremendously, and they slip badly, they slip down to 94%. They could still get, they, they're still graded as high growth, even though they went backwards, because their trajectory is not going to go below proficiency. Or, you know, before, below at six, seventy percent or something, is that, isn't that correct? I mean?
That's actually, so, in the old system, that would have been correct, but uh, the way the growth model works now is it looks across the entire spectrum, so uh, high-performing schools that start declining will actually not get credit under our growth model for that.
And that's not how it was seen just a few months ago, when you were, when you were talking about it. Um, and then a child, and then a school that has twenty percent proficiency and their, their whole work gets to twenty-two percent, is that i- if they're not on a trajectory to get to proficient in that score or something, then that's not really good growth, that's not sufficient growth. It's not going to get them to seventy or something, so the trajectory isn't good enough.
There is a measure of sufficiency built into the model, so yes, you have to demonstrate what is called adequate growth, um, and that's to, to get sort of uh, to proficiency in a, in a certain time.
Right, I mean, it could be ten percent growth, this could be tremendous growth, but it's not enough. And so they don't get, you know, the teacher gets a, oh, you know, it's an F, or the school gets an F or something, because they, they had growth, but not enough growth. And I, I will, I mean, when we talked about this, I thought we, I don't know, some phone call that we had, I could have sworn that it was, you know, the real high-level proficient, ninety-eight percent, if they slip backwards, as long as they don't slip back too much, um, they will still have positive, be shown as good growth.
So, let me try to kind of expand on what Chris said, and again, you can tell me if I'm wrong. Um, to have a decline in proficiency means that at a student level, some students didn't maintain where they were, they, they did worse in the following year than they did before. So that student actually doesn't count as growing anymore, because they did worse. So then when you go to look at how many kids had their adequate growth, those kids didn't, if they didn't at least stay where they were.
Right.
So that's, I think what Chris is saying, you, if, if a child stays proficient but doesn't kind of, they go from advanced to proficient, let's say, that doesn't count as growing, which is sometimes controversial as well, right? Like, they're still proficient, so why shouldn't we get credit for them? But if you're looking at growth only, it's about, did the student make enough growth to get to proficient?
Well, I'm going to need to understand more about this calculation, because it sounds like it might have changed, and then finally, the proficiency, we just heard, is not grade level. So, you know, the whole seven, fifty percent weren't proficient, and yet only five percent are not at grade level, and so proficiency doesn't even, so I mean, just the growth numbers, the proficiency numbers, I, who knows what they mean, and whether they could be changed, and the definition changed some other way.
It, it is, it is a complicated area, and um, it, it is with peril that we make high-stakes decisions based on this complicated area.
Well, and not only that, but I would also, sorry, but, but when we get to A to F, the way these things can change, I think is important to maybe introduce some other ways of looking at uh, and assign maybe a few other level grades, uh, for field of categories, because right now, it just seems to me the, the disincentive is against the, the teacher and the school in a high-poverty area. You know, it's harder for them to get good, good, good uh, growth and proficiency the way the models currently are, are made, and so maybe there's a way to show that if there is some growth, that it's a good thing, maybe they, there's a way to give them an A.
And that's a, and that is a great segue to the rest of the presentation, I appreciate that, Mr. McMillan, if we could finish the presentation, that would be great.
I'm going to be the first one to ask.
You bet, thank you.
Um, okay, so, thank you for that discussion of the index, and I look forward to continuing um, our conversation and moving into the A to F law itself. I'm going to do a little bit more, and then Chris is going to take you through some of the guts of this. Um, so as we all know, this law was signed into law in December of 2018 during lame duck. Um, the board was vocal about not signing it, the department was as well, but it is here, and so the department has been gifted with the opportunity to work through implementation of this legislation. Uh, the legislation has some requirements, all of which we'll talk about in greater detail, but the key is these five annual letter grades and three ranking labels on components of a school's performance, uh, for all public schools. It does not have one overall grade, so that's been a bit of a misnomer, some people think it does, but it, it does not. Um, there are requirements around identifying high-achieving and low-achieving schools, and schools with subgroups, that, that is akin to what ESSA requires. Um, it excludes alternative education campuses from the letter grades and rankings. Uh, we don't plan to talk a lot about that today, just because of the depth of the presentation, but we're happy to have a further conversation on that. And then the law requires this peer review panel, um, it was, it consists, consists of five people nominated by uh, the legislature and the governor, and they have this and they have this responsibility to review and submit findings to the Michigan Department of Education, the state legislature. So, again, as we move through implementation, here are some guiding principles that we as a department have been trying to use. The first might sound simple, but we need to state it. The first is to implement the law. So, in many cases, PA 601 has pretty prescriptive requirements. It says this is what you have to do. So, in that case, we, we need to do what the law says. But in places where it's not prescriptive, we've tried to use a couple guiding principles. One is to reuse existing policies, practices, and procedures that we're already using in places like the parent dashboard, so that there's not different ways, different words that mean different things depending on if you're in the dashboard or the A to F, trying to make it as simple and as understandable for parents and the general public as possible, knowing that that is a high bar because now there's three systems out there and that is confusing. But if we can at least have words mean the same things and use similar rules, we hope that will reduce confusion. But to guide the rest of our discussion here, we want to talk about these three buckets of implementation decisions. Again, bucket one is if the law says it, that's, that's what it says, that needs to be implemented. Then there's a second bucket, which I think this is some of what maybe Mr. McMillan and Ms., or Dr. Ulbricht were, were calling out, is the bucket two are things that are aligned with ESA, so how we do it on the parent dashboard, how we do it on the school index. There is the option to do it differently in the context of 601. There, those are still decision points, but they're of a different level than the third bucket, which is where there is decision-making discretion. Some, there needs to be a decision, and we don't have a prior practice or law to tell us what it might need to be.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Kestrel. So, I'm, I'm going to walk us through sort of what will generate a letter grade or a ranking label in the system. So, first up, we have student proficiency in both math and English language arts. That is specified in the law itself, where we had, where we were trying to align with existing systems and practices, the students that would be included in that calculation would be enrolled in the school for what is called a full academic year, and that's to make sure that the schools are held accountable only for those students that received a meaningful amount of instruction throughout the academic year. Where there is decision-making discretion is having a letter grade for proficiency itself versus having two separate letter grades, one for math and one for ELA proficiency. So, in sort of keeping with, trying to maintain simplicity, we were looking at having, you know, five letter grades instead of potentially more here. The second area that would receive a letter grade is student adequate growth, again, looking at both math and English language arts. This is in the law. It's based on student growth percentiles and adequate growth percentiles. Again, we're looking only at the inclusion of students that were enrolled in the school for a full academic year, again, to make sure that schools are only held accountable for those students that were with the school for a meaningful amount of time. And again, where we have decision-making discretion in the law is to generate a single letter grade versus, again, having two separate letter grades, one for math growth and one for ELA growth. The third indicator that receives a letter grade is English learner growth. This is based on English learners proficiency and/or growth on an English language proficiency assessment, we use the RITA in Michigan. This aligns, so this is in the law, but it also aligns with the federal requirement to include this, which is in the index system. Graduation rates also receive a, a letter grade in the system. It uses the best of the four, five, or six-year cohort rate, so we already calculate this for the index. It's also on the parent dashboard as well, you can drill in and look at a school's graduation rates, four, five, or six years there. And then the last area in 601 that would receive a letter grade, and this is new-ish, is student proficiency compared to similar schools. This is sort of similar to when you're looking at the parent dashboard and you're looking at a particular school and then looking at the peer schools, basically. So, this takes that concept and puts a, puts a letter grade to it. So, the law is that we have to have this comparison. Where it's aligned with ESA, the index, and the parent dashboard is the methodology that we're proposing, is the same methodology that we currently use on the parent dashboard. The reason why we are proposing this is if a parent goes to the parent dashboard and looks at the peer schools for their child's school, we want them to see the same peer schools on this A to F system, again, to minimize that confusion. The, the methodology that we currently use on the parent dashboard includes up to 30 similar schools, and it calculates an average based on that. Characteristics used include the student-teacher ratio, the percent of economically disadvantaged students, instructional expenditures per student, and then student FTE or headcount. You might also remember that on the parent dashboard, we do peers based on distance, but that would not be part of the A to F system. And again, that's because parents indicated interest in knowing what nearby schools are like. And then, of course, we're going to, to ensure that the comparison is valid, is, we'll be comparing grade span, similar schools to each other, so we're not going to compare an elementary school to a high school, for example. Moving on to the areas that would get what are called ranking labels in the legislation, and so the ranking labels are significantly above average, above average, average, below average, and significantly below average, and they're assigned to three different areas. So, we have the rate of chronically absent students, that's on the parent dashboard as well as in the index right now. It looks at participation rate of students on state tests. Again, that's part of the accountability of the index system as well as the parent dashboard. And then here again, too, we're proposing for the participation using a single ranking label instead of a separate ranking label for math and is a different label for ELA. And then we also have student subgroup proficiency compared with the corresponding subgroups proficiency at the statewide level, and that is in law as well. Okay, so, this next slide kind of goes through the process that we'll be using to then determine sort of what constitutes an A, what constitutes a B, what constitutes average, et cetera. So, like the state assessments, we have to determine a cut score for the grades and ranking labels. This decision is left up to the department to make, so, and you can kind of think of a cut score as a grading scale. So, what we're doing is utilizing a standard-setting process to develop recommended cut scores. We're using an independent facilitator who will then basically facilitate a group of educators to come up with recommended definitions of school-level performance, using data and then producing a recommended cut scores or grading scales report. The peer review panel, which then reviews the system as a whole, they will review these proposed thresholds and will write a report. And note that the peer review panel is really, it is a review panel, there is no approval or rejection process, so they can put in things in their report that they approve or that they agree with, but there also might be areas where they disagree with what the department has come up with. And then the approval of these cut scores, again, lies with MDE, and that is a decision-making discretion that's there.
And as you all were talking about in the context of the index, and Mr. McMillan said about As to Fs, what is an A, what is an F? How do you take a continuum of information and cut it into buckets? That is what this whole cut score process is about. So, again, the department has sought to put in place a process to give us some recommendations that uses educators and data, but this is a place where there's a lot of decision-making discretion. Somebody, it has to be decided what they actually are. So, getting information around what they could be through this process is the first step, but this is a really important part of the system to be decided.
I'll start reading.
We're almost done.
Yep. All right. So, and then just to reiterate what Dr. Kestrel had said earlier, there is no required substantive letter grade or ranking label, so schools will receive, right now, up to five letter grades in those five areas that I just outlined, as well as up to three of those ranking labels.
And just to wrap up, showing the buckets again, so as Chris was talking, you heard him reference, this is in the law, this is something we do in the dashboard and the index, or this is decision-making discretion. And the big, I would say, these are the big four decisions that are outstanding. One, do we combine math and ELA into one grade, so you get a grade for proficiency or a grade for growth, or do you get a grade for math proficiency, a grade for ELA proficiency, a grade for math growth, and a grade for ELA growth? That is a bucket three decision, it is to our discretion. We just talked about this cuts, those cut scores for the A to F grades and the labels are absolutely a decision-making discretion, they're a bucket three decision. And then the last two, do we keep that alignment with ESA and the parent dashboard for calculation rules, or do we make separate ones for the A to F system? That's a bucket two. And then that comparison to similar schools, do we reuse the methodology that we co-developed with the board through the dashboard process so that parents see the same set of similar schools, or do we use a different one for this purpose only? Thank you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you very much, Ms. Seto.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, I, I just wanted to ask some questions to clarify a few things from page three, where we left off after the last discussion. So, could you remind me what ESA, I mean, I know that they have requirements, like you had to have a majority based on this testing. Are these other things also mandated at these percentages by ESA?
These, I think, you're looking at this chart, right? Okay, sorry. These categories are mandated by ESA, the, the categories. The percentages, the states had some autonomy to decide. Like Mr. McMillan pointed out, there is a requirement that growth and proficiency are, what's the specific term? Like
Majority.
Significantly impactful in the system, significant weight in the system. So, this was part of the negotiations with US Ed about, is this enough? How much can we, how, how much, basically, how little can we weight growth and proficiency? How much will you let us upweight the other factors?
So, it would be difficult to change, it's changeable, but you'd have to get another way to
Be an amendment process?
Right.
But it is something that states have the authority to negotiate with US Ed.
Yes, I also just wanted to, on, on page seven, where it talks about what is required to have a letter grade, so these are things that are, you say we use the methodology that's on the parent dashboard, which, so that's what we have some discretion over in these things here? Yeah, I'm just, and I know it's, again, getting to my point before, I think counting or looking at the number of special needs children in a school should also be counted, or at least with certain, you know, intellectual disabilities that should be considered in comparing them to the other.
Ms. Seto, for clarification, is it the number of special needs children, or is it the percentage of?
Percentage, makes sense.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Who was on the, the peer review panel? I'm, I'm just curious if that's dictated by law, I can't remember, or is that something we
The law gave a nomination to the House, one to the Senate, and three to the governor. Can you give them their names?
Yeah, Dr. Dan Quinn, Dr. DeWida Colbert, Ceneal Joy, Dr. David Stite, and Jonathan Williams.
None of the superintendents.
Uh, Dr. DeWida Colbert was a former superintendent, worked
No, but our superintendent is here at the state board, doesn't have any
No, that was all, yeah, governor and legislature.
And, and to the distinction drawn in the presentation, it is peer review, it is not peer approval.
Right.
Okay, that, that, that's all, it's another, it's another body that has, has sort of inserted itself within the process, but it has no formal authority over, over that process. Mr. McMillan, President Ulbricht.
To be clear, PA 601 does not say that the board or MDE couldn't add letters, right?
Does not prohibit
We could, we could take, you know, these could be five or eight, and then we could add four, you know, we could add a different definition of growth, maybe growth of graduation rates, or we could, you know, things that we think might be useful, in my mind, it might be useful to kind of allay some of the thoughts, how credible the current, the, what was passed by the legislature, I think it's going to be harmful, so maybe to make it less harmful would be my interest in maybe adding some letters or categories to make it less harmful, might be the best that we could do. And I find it interesting, the cut scores are discretionary, so, I mean, I, you know, when there's discretion given, maybe we ought to really use discretion, or, and when we say we, I know it's MDE, but I also know that the board has some say on that, or probably could if we pass it for a resolution, but, I mean, it doesn't, a C could be extremely wide, right? It could be huge. It could, or, you know, it could be decided that As and Bs are quite narrow, and it doesn't, there's nothing that says that it has to be equally distributed.
There is
Maybe some people would say that's the way you do things, but it also, discretion is given, if you're dealing with a harmful situation, maybe there's ways to make it less harmful. Maybe you have to use that discretion.
I, I think the, the board is unanimous in your concern about A through F. The administration shares your concern. Whether or not the, the cure for that is more letter grades is a question.
Right.
But, but it is, it is certain that this is, we are now in implementation phase, we're no longer debating a bill, we're, we're talking about how we implement and in what form we implement, not whether we implement. President Ulbricht.
And I would just, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm not done.
Fine.
I would just say that to not, I mean, we should think outside the box, and again, in my mind, I think in most, on this board, it's, it's something destructive or problematic and maybe will not paint a very true picture, maybe if we make it less destructive, I think that that could be useful. The second bucket, number three, keep alignment with ESA, isn't that really a bucket three? Because we, the answer could be no, I mean, we're just, this is not going to be, so we're going to decide that, that this implementation to A to F law is not going to align to ESA or the dashboard, which is, so, I mean, isn't that kind of a bucket three really?
It could be, I think we were calling out that something like the cut scores where they're, to your point, there's no, the law doesn't say they have to be this way or that way, it's kind of wide open. In these areas where we have data out there that parents are used to looking at, changing the way they look at a different system has a different level of, is different impact level. So, we just wanted to be clear that that was a different type of decision than one where there's no precedent and totally an open field of discretion.
President Ulbricht.
A couple of questions, I just put one down, I can remember that one, so I will come back to that one. Under slide 13, it, it talks about comparison to similar schools. If I remember correctly, the actual law mentions that a commission is supposed to identify what makes a, a comparable school. Have we just decided to ignore that, or are we, is, how are we addressing that?
We believe the commission was a drafting error, that initially there was something called a educational accountability commission or something like that, that actually had more power than just a review panel, and we believe that was And we believe that was something that got left into the, the legislation that eventually that passed.
I agree with that, but it's still there. So, are we just ignoring it and pretending like it's not there?
I mean, we've received clarification from, like, the legislative drafting people that it's an error. We could seek additional written clarification or something, because there's nothing, the rest of the law that says who is the commission and who nominates them and what are they?
Right.
Is not there. So, I wouldn't say we are ignoring it. We are...
Art effect is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's like a dead end street, so...
Other, other, other questions? Do you have another?
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm actually not done with that one yet, because if, if we're not utilizing a commission, then I'm going to assume that the board is the proper authority to make that decision, correct?
I think that there is some value to the board being as involved in this as it would like, recognizing that the board was unanimously opposed to it. If the board wants to be involved in the setting of cut scores, I think that that is completely appropriate. I think that that is fine. They have to be set, whether we like it or not. We're in a different phase, if you will, of this process. We're in the implementation of a law rather than debating of a bill. And if the board would like to set those cut scores, the board certainly has the, the right to do it. What we would suggest as an administration is that you permit us to share some thoughts with our group of people on some of these, and to debate those, and to come to some meeting of the minds here at this table.
I, I agree that you guys should do that. I also will go out on a limb and say that I am positive this board wants to approve any cut scores that are made. My final question is, the panel was supposed to give a report to the legislature and the governor's office. Do you know, and I believe they had two weeks to do that? Has that happened?
By the date and statute, they gave a preliminary letter outlining their process to give a full report by the end of October. They need a little more time. We need more time to get educators to do this cut score process, and they just need more time. And we need to have these conversations with you to go back. The, the system's just not fully ready for them to write their full report. But we did notify everyone who needed to be notified, and that seemed to be acceptable. We're making progress, I think, is what needs to be noted.
Thank you. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. And I appreciate Dr. Albrecht's comments. Certainly, this board member will speak to the fact that I would like to be involved in approving or reviewing cut scores. On slide fourteen, there's references to rate of chronically absent students, and I know the state, or at least SEPI, has some sort of a formula based on that, but my understanding is that would be another area in which we might be able to, or should be able to have some input where it might not mirror exactly.
So, that's why we've labeled it as a bucket two. We use it in the index under the School Quality and Student Success Indicator, and we also use it on the dashboard. We call it percent of on-track attendance, but it's, again, our recommendation is we use the same paradigm, so people see it. That is, though, a point of decision-making. If we wanted to use a different paradigm, that's, it's not spelled out in the law what it has to mean.
All right. And the student subgroup proficiency compared to corresponding statewide, I would see a little concern for small schools in particular, when you're comparing them to statewide numbers, which are obviously larger. So, again, just a, a note of concern on that one. And to Mr. McMillan's comments earlier about student growth percentiles, I'd be very much interested in us looking at that, especially as those are calculated based on what is the endpoint. In other words, if we're, we're looking at a calculation of a student's growth from one year to the next based on one test given for three hours during one day in the spring, then, you know, what are we utilizing as that, okay, this was growth or this was not growth, based on what that end number is and who's making that end number? So, again, those are just some feedback from my perspective.
Thank you very much. Other board members, other questions? Ms. Snyder.
You guys mentioned, I think in a previous conversation about ESSA, that you sent us out the profile of a proficient cut score, correct?
I think Andy said, we will send some of the documentation around, the standard setting, the definition of what's a proficient student, where that derives from, the ESSA requirements about that, some of that background information.
Okay.
Other, other questions, other comments, other thoughts? As we work to shape some draft recommendations for your consideration, what other thoughts do you have to, to share with us? Yes, Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I could be, cut scores are determined every year, correct? Depending on...
Have we missed that?
Have we missed that?
No.
Okay. Then I am wrong on that. First time today.
I will double check with Andy to make sure that I'm not wrong as well, and I will, I will answer that. I'm, I will double check. But I think, no.
Yes, Ms. Millen.
The, the comparing to similar schools, I think that was going to be a section of potentially much controversy, and to be quite honest, the more odd things, but the more it would point out to me the silliness of doing the A to F. So, I'm not particularly concerned about it, but, so, what, what this is saying, and I don't know, maybe we have discretion, is that there's going to be, let's see, it says economically disadvantaged. I don't know how much these are weighted, like student teacher ratio economically, is that discretionary? How much we're going to weigh each of those?
Yeah, yeah, the, the legislation just refers to...
Oh, I mean, we could, we, we could say that a hundred, ninety-eight percent's going to be economically disadvantaged, and so, it's going to be, I mean, I'm just, I forget what we would do, but we're going to have a lot of, the schools that are, the rich schools...
Yes.
That don't have economically, there's going to be schools, if that was a ban, there would be schools that are probably As and all the other stuff just because of, you know, whatever, but they could be F.
Yes. You are exactly right.
Yeah.
And in a series of positions the department has taken on grading or reductive forms of labeling, this has always been one that we have said is a concern, because you're right, when you pull a group of otherwise high-performing schools together, and then you say, of you...
Right.
How well are you doing? Someone's not doing well, unless they're all doing perfectly, but someone's doing slightly less well than everyone else, and then they get a lower grade.
Right.
Is that an authentic portrayal of performance? Especially when you attach a grade to it.
Well, none of this is authentic portrayal. To be quite honest with you, if it doesn't, I mean, to, for me, the quicker we show the ridiculousness of the law, the quicker they will feel it. And if it means legislators in wealthy areas saying, my schools are getting Fs, we've got to repeal this, well, fine, repeal the whole thing. That's fine with me. So, you know, to me, so, I was going to say that we need it to be, you know, fair is just a loaded word. The whole thing isn't fair. So, to say that, you know, would it be fair to have these schools getting an F? Well, you know, if that's what it takes to show the ridiculousness, ridiculousness of the law, then maybe that's what we ought to do. All right? You know, I know that these impact real people, but, you know, the more we can show that it was a bad law, I, you know, and if we have discretion, I'm just going to say it again, I think, you know, I would really urge that what's brought before us is really thinking outside the box as much as you can.
We, we look forward to your help in getting us outside of the box. I, we, we can tell that you have substantial energy in that regard, and you're not getting a lot of pushback at this table in that, in that respect. Other, other questions or comments? President Albrecht.
The only final thought that I would have is going back again to language. Language is going to matter very much here, and really not using code words like proficiency, if we can avoid it, that don't have necessarily corresponding meaning to what we're actually looking at.
There, it, I think, you know, to that, to that point, we're not going to be able to avoid the use of the term proficiency. There is a value to defining it each and every place that we use it, because in our world, the, the term does morph in its definition from conversation to conversation, even within conversations, it can, it can change meaning, so, so I respect what you say.
Let me give you one more point.
Yeah.
If I say the words college and career-ready in this, I think my, I'm going to lose it.
Fair, fair enough. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just a thought. So, when you look at economically disadvantaged, I assume using the free reduced lunch stuff? Or is that something else?
That, and there's, it's more, it's a composite measure, but yes, essentially, it's free reduced lunch and then a couple other triggers.
So, I'm wondering if you can separate the free, the free lunch? I mean, there's communities that are, have, that shouldn't be compared to free reduced because they have much higher and more intense poverty, and if there's some way to pull them out and have them compared alone, I'm not, yeah, and then there's, like, communities that are just, they're just, everybody in the school gets free lunch, or whatever.
To, to that point, the free and reduced price lunch economic indicator has diminished value over the last several years as, as more people have qualified in one way, shape, or form. So, we're up to, in the state, we're a little bit above fifty percent. So, there's a creep in, in, in the metric, which isn't necessarily all about the same level of poverty, to your point. There, there, all poverty not created equal. I noticed your mug says poverty matters. That's true, and high poverty particularly does. Yeah.
And that is, and again, if the board wants to spend more time on this matching methodology, that is, I'm happy to do that. This, we talked about it, if you guys remember, with the dashboard some. The reason there's more than just economically disadvantaged in characteristics is trying to suss out some of this difference in school composition. So, it's not just percent ED students, it's how much you spend per student and what's your class size. And a couple other things that we thought are the matching variables to help you get the most similar cluster of schools that you can. But how you define that cluster is always, it, it is very much a thing that's a decision point every time. So, this is what we use now. It seems to be working pretty well on the dashboard, but look forward to the conversation.
Those who economic status of students is the major driver of academic performance on the tests that we've been discussing over the last two hours. It's not to say that it's, it's, it's a lockstep relationship. It isn't a lockstep relationship in any way, shape, or form, but it is the greatest predictor of any given student's achievement. And can it be bent? You bet it can. And it is often, but that is the, the major variable that drives performance. And that is why, when we look at these sorts of comparisons, we, we move to this indicator, which isn't a perfect indicator, but it's the only indicator that we have relative to economic disadvantage, to which we have easy access, to which we have easy access. There are other indicators which we have less easy access in public education. This particular socioeconomic indicator has lost its utility as more and more families have ended up getting lumped into it, to your, to your point. Other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. McMillan.
I'll say, I want to get back to discretion one last time, because I want to remind everybody that this law passed by one vote at two in the morning or something, right during rain duck, and I was lobbying hard all along for weeks and days and hours, hitting up to it to try to stop it. The reason why the state, you know, the, the state board and MDE has the discretion that we're talking about, one of the reasons is because they had to, they had to give up some of that authority that was going to be vested with this, this other commission, or basically, they were trying to take it away from the state board. They had to give that up in order to get that last vote, or those last few votes. So, the, the fact that we have discretion, I really want, I really want to emphasize that we should use that discretion. And because, you know, there was a big concern, or we were raising, that the, that the legislature was trying to encircle the authority constitution had given to us, and there could really have been some big issues there, and we worked hard to, we worked hard to stop it. But we also, because of that hard work, I think they backed off a lot and gave us more and more discretion. So, I just urge superintendent and, and, you know, when you're looking at what to bring back to us, that we really need that discretion given to us, we fought for it, and, and in my mind, I think the legislators had probably voted for it and said, well, it's, I know there's probably some bad things about it, but at least, you know, there'll be some discretion with people who kind of know what they're doing, as opposed to the legislature dictating how they're going to decide A to F or whatever. So, let's give them that discretion, and I'll vote for it. So, it was very mindful of how this came about, so let's use it.
Well, well taken. Does anybody have a benediction on the benediction? Going once and twice, once and twice. Ms. LaHid?
Let's eat.
I, I cannot think of a better benediction. Eleven fifty-eight. Thank you very much.
Take your orange ticket with you.